...of the United States of America and to their public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, moving in justice for all.
Well done, everyone. Thanks for coming on this hot, hot, hot day. Huh? Yeah. All right. So our first order of business is Hank Barton and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to talk about options for the Old Town Hall.
And maybe a couple of historic options here.
Yes.
Anyways, Elizabeth, and she's gonna have to pronounce your last name because I need to practice it.
Elizabeth Rivera, I'm the preservationist for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
And I thought that since we still had money in that national contract, we ought to try to spend some of it, we're probably now that I extended your contract again.
Okay.
And I know that we need to wait on the construction of the Public Safety Center before we continue to lease our old town hall. Everybody thought it was not too early to start looking at some of the options after that building was short of tearing it down.
How much money is left in that? How much money is left in that line?
Jane Harrington sent me a note, I think sixty-eight hundred.
Okay, thanks.
And change, I guess.
Sure.
That's the contract money?
That's the contract money, yeah. The push contract is now five years old, at least. So I think we started on that. So we did store at least the first floor with the, and not upstairs, but the loft was locked. I didn't have a key. And Billy Inspector says no one has except when you do these stuff, other than what happened in the forest.
No, it's just records of people been going in and out of it as public records.
Okay. I probably shouldn't find your key, but I can, but they explained that it was, it still is a stage up there. And that the Town Hall did serve half a century ago or a century ago. It was a kind of community center.
There isn't way to get upstairs without a key?
Oh.
I'll explain to you later.
Well, we have to be careful because I was confronted by somebody when we went in and it's not clear who I was.
Well, it should be, it shouldn't be-
People told me it was officers or something.
Oh, yeah, but they should, are the officers upstairs or downstairs?
They were doing CPR class in the back of first floor.
Okay, because the men's room needed to be fixed. Was that fixed?
I don't know. I mean, I'm not doing more.
I'm sure that my head achieves, clear of the chief, so.
Sure. Um, I've been going through the recommendations for master plan and the goals and strategies that were set out in terms of historic and cultural resources for the town. And I think several of them could be addressed and used to help reuse and preserve the Old Town Hall. Among the options would be to, because the building is currently on the National Register as part of the larger National Register Historic District, you could consider implementing a local Historic District. And that would ensure that the building would be preserved in the future even if it was sold and used for another purpose. It would give you some oversight on the appearance of the building, the outside of the building, the preservation standards to which you want to use the building in order to maintain its character and, you know, its place in the town. So that's one option on how to do that. You could either do an individual building, local Historic District, or you could do the same boundaries as the National Register District, modify them here and there, several different options. There's also the possibility of putting a preservation restriction on the building if it was sold to, you know, a private owner. A preservation restriction would basically mean that the town would maintain say over the outside of the building while the, you know, individual property owner could do what they wanted with the inside of the building. If it was sold and because it's in the National Register Historic District, the building would be eligible for federal and state tax credits. What that means is that a tax credit, I mean, it's really, it's literally a credit that you take off on your taxes for allowable expenses for the rehabilitation and renovation of the building. Only if it's going for a commercial purpose. It can't be, you know, an individual homeowner. If it was going for a retail purpose or commercial purpose, like breakfast, a restaurant, a store, something like that, the property owner could then apply for tax credits to renovate the building, which is a great tool that people use to renovate historic buildings. The third thing, that would be a possibility in terms of, you know, giving the town kind of a say over what happens to the building would be a demolition delay ordinance. That would be kind of a town-wide issue. You can set them up so that they're either age-based, so that they're inventory-based, you know, buildings that have been surveyed, buildings that are considered significant. Any buildings over a hundred years old, there's multiple ways you could set it up. But that would basically mean that if someone wanted to come in and tear the building down, there would be a delay for them to do that so that negotiations could happen to try and save the building. It's been successful in many towns as a tool to preferentially preserve historic buildings. So those are basically the three main tools that can be used for preservation of a building such as the Old Town Hall. Most of them come at, you know, there's a cost associated with doing these things, but it's not the cost of renovating the building yourself necessarily. It's really just preserving the building so that someone, you know, if someone else came along and wanted to renovate it, that it would be a cost to them. So those are, and some of those things are listed in your master plan as strategies and goals in the future, including the Historic District, local Historic District as well. So, if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to.
I have a question about the third option. What did you call it again? Demolition?
A demolition delay ordinance.
Okay. Could you just explain that again?
Sure. What that means is that if someone wanted to pull a demolition permit for the building, they would first have to go before the Historical Commission to get permission to do it. And the Historical Commission would have a delay on that demolition of thirty, sixty, ninety, hundred, eighty, it's, you know, it's a moving target number of days at which that they could kind of negotiate with the property owner and try to find an alternative to demolish any building.
Who would come in and want to demolish? If the town owns it, maybe I'm just-
That would only if someone else had it.
Okay, so as long as we own it, then we don't have, then really option three is not for us. It would only occur if the town sold it first. Okay.
And it's exactly, it's a delay. I mean, it's a stall tactic in order to try to negotiate a differing outcome other than demolishing the building. There have been buildings where it's been successful, there have been buildings where it isn't successful. The most recent example in our region was in Polkville, a farm mansion, was under an extended demolition delay work period so that they could try to negotiate with the property owners, the YSCA, and try to get them to not demolish the building. Unfortunately, they were unable to fill in the agreement, demolition delay ordinance, you know, ended, and they took the building down. So sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. But it's a, you know, it's a preservation tool that we have as a way to prevent demolition of those things.
Now, you said that would have to be town-wide?
It's a town-wide ordinance. It doesn't-
Why wouldn't it be just historical, if it's gonna go in front of the Historical Society?
Well, it would be town-wide in the sense that it would encompass the whole town with buildings of a certain age within the town, or buildings that have been added to the inventory, historic inventory of the town. It's not every building would come up for these sort of things.
David, do you have a question?
Hank, what's the goal for the building, in your opinion? What's the goal for the building in your opinion?
Goal?
Yeah.
I would say it's long, I'd preserve it. And then you put it in private hands and with the care of the tax credits, preserve the outside with it and using one of the methods Elizabeth suggested. I think it'd be nice to have that building as a kind of community center. I mean, being safe. I was just listening to a senior citizen whose name will go, will go unnamed because I don't know a name, but probably thinking about the fact that our current senior center is maybe not as adequate as it could be in terms of size and so forth.
It's better than the basement, isn't it?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
One must remember when one started to remember how much, how great the journey has been because they were in the basement here, so.
With mold.
With mold and flooding.
I remember that.
How useful would the funds that are left in that contract be for any of these options?
You could use the funds to do probably the local Historic District, to do the study. Generally, a local Historic District originates from the town on the Historic District, the Historical Commission. They would act as the study committee, but we could assist with the research and the meetings and that sort of thing. It's a lengthy process to get a local Historic District put into place. There's a research-
Back to me. We have a local Historical District or we don't have one?
I thought we had one.
We have one that encompasses the center of town, High Street over to, including the cemetery.
But does that have any-
I don't know. That's why I'm asking you.
That's a question, is, I mean, question I have. If you have a local Historic District, does it mean anything unless you specifically say what people can and can't do to your complaints?
Well, there's a difference between a National Register Historic District and a local Historic District. As far as I know, the district is on the National Register but not on a local register, not designated locally. The difference is that a National Register designation is really an honorary designation. Unless there are federal or state permitting, funding, regulatory issues involved, anyone can do everything they want to their own priority, even if they're in a National Register District. If you're in a local Historic District, that's where regulations can come into place on what you can do to the outside of a property. Some go as far as to regulate paint colors and that sort of thing. Many do not. Usually, they'll have things to say about putting satellite dishes on the front of your building, or what kind of windows you can put in, or wood windows or vinyl windows and those kinds of issues. Fences in the front versus not fences in front, those sorts of issues. But a local Historic District would help preserve the character and the look of a neighborhood.
Now, did you, there was a survey done of the building before this building was built, and it passed OSHA air quality because the windows leaked so much. And around that time, you could actually look through the chimney because it needed to be pointed, and we had to sort of block off certain areas because bricks were falling off the building. Half the parking lot doesn't belong to the town, and that half has a septic system in there. It's a wet, it's a wet area. So I think, and Hank, you know me, I'm just very practical. I just-
I'm already explaining.
Oh, she's explaining, okay, all right.
The septic issues I forgot about. Is it half the parking lot?
It's, it's, it's-
It's not half that.
Well, I mean, part of that.
Four spots, four spaces.
The strip along the-
Up toward the front.
But my point being, there's a lot of stuff that's, you know, one of the reasons we're over here, obviously. But there is a study that was done, a review of the building that was done oh-seven-ish or something like that. It's around somewhere.
If there are, you know, restoration issues and renovations that have to happen to the building, there is a fund that's available for buildings that are listed in the National State Register. It's called the Massachusetts Preservation Projects Fund. Pool of money that's available in the Massachusetts Historical Commission. It's a yearly cycle of applications, highly competitive, and it requires a fifty-fifty match, which you CPA funds as a match. But what, what the money is available for is bricks and mortar fixes to the building. Things like repointing a chimney, things like, you know, repointing the entire building, fixing the roof, fixing the windows, making things more compliant, breaking them up to code, and those kinds of things. So there is a pool of money available. It's an eighty-page application process, but it's a yearly cycle that happens through a match.
Do you have matching funds involved?
Yeah, it's fifty-fifty match. But CPA funds are eligible to be used as a match for that.
Hank, what decision would you like us to make tonight to move forward with an evaluation or?
I, I, I'll leave people. I just thought, since we had money in the account, we had, just thought, for the evaluation person, I mean, you can stay and hopefully all of us can have a little on the Public Safety Center, two years.
No, no.
In a month.
Twenty-three months. Yeah, man.
So this is something we could think about and-
Yeah.
And talk about again and-
I mean, at the end of the, at the end of the day, if the goal is to keep the building as a, you know, an important building in the center of town, whether or not the town owns it, and to keep it looking like it looks now, maybe with some renovations and fixes, then something's to hold over the way to get to that. And it would help if the town decides to sell it to make sure that it maintains its current form and appearance on the outside so that it has the same, you know, character defining features. So that would be the local Historic District, putting a preservation restriction on the building with, with, if sold, one of those sort of things. So those are kind of proactive things you could do now to ensure that, since the building, you know, its future is kind of a question mark, to ensure that the nation is, you know, sort of placed where it's-
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a default one, like, the cost of renovation is more than a certain percentage of the value, you say that it's not feasible? In other words, that you can just open up to anything? Is there a point where the breakpoint, you know, it needs two million dollars of renovation because it needs structural steel because the bricks are pulling apart, blah, 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 and it needs a new foundation? At what point do you say it's, you know, is there a percentage or not, or?
No.
Oh, I just, you know, I thought maybe some common sense was like in that is no.
There is really not. In terms of preservation, there really isn't a, like a hard, fast percentage. It really has, the emotional value of the building to the town really weighs into that and how much the town feels it's a, you know, important piece of the town history. That comes into play versus its, you know, overall cost versus having someone else preserve the building. If you preserve the building, I mean, it's, it's really a moving target.
Okay. Right.
I have a comment. I think that it's a good gesture, you brought her in to talk about it, but I think before we can even think about making any decisions on that, I'd like to see you go to Historical Commission, get them involved, find out what we have for a district, what we, what we don't have, what we need to do to get that district, and see if they're on board. And I think before we can make a decision, they have to be in the loop, and I think they have to be well informed of this because I'm not one for jumping over a committee's job and duties.
Yeah, cause I'm old, I'm close to that, towards it was coming, but I forgot about the name.
Okay. That's all right.
Otherwise, but I mean, I think I can get you together.
Okay, I'm happy to meet with, I've been meeting with the historical commission all over the region. I'm happy to put them together.
So what? Go ahead.
Are-
Go ahead.
Oh, if there's time, we're looking at the map of the canal, the area of the Old Town Hall, and if you have two minutes, you can tell me what the status of the canal that, which seems to be, I think they had it a few months ago, seems to be centered in Southwick, and there wasn't any concern here, so I'm just going to, do you want to cover that?
Sure. Yeah, we were admiring the, the North Hampton Harbor Canal map. I've discussed several times with the town of Southwick's Historical Commission, the canal in general. They have a pool of funds from a mitigation agreement. They can only be used for putting the canal on the register or restoring parts of the canal. They would like to see that money used. But in discussions with Massachusetts Historical Commission, they would like to see the whole canal put on the register and not just a piece of it. So really, that involves a multi-town effort and multi-town funding to get the canal put on the register. A number of years ago, there was a movement and a friends committee that was formed to start the process. They did a study, they had a consultant come in and put together a preliminary scope of work and a pilot, kind of a pilot study with a section of the canal to really see how it could be done and what work needs to be done in order to do that. It's an extensive amount of field work documenting what is still there of the canal, where it is, kind of the pieces and the people and all those sorts of things. But the process saw all that sort of point because I think, as I understand it, they issued out the RFP for the consultant and no one, no one did. And then it kind of-
I don't know. I thought there was some work done before this, this-
There was a pilot, there was a pilot program together, but they never actually did the pilot study.
But I mean, there was some work by various cities and towns along the canal.
Yes, absolutely.
And then part of the study was to get their work together and try to form it as one cohesive plan.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But a lot of, not a lot, several towns did do their work already.
So it's definitely something that, you know, put in the back of your mind in terms of, is another CPA eligible expense to use the preservation portion of CPA money?
Is that something Josh was involved in?
Josh from PD, Josh Garcia?
Uh, no. Cause I'm meeting with Josh from PDPC on a multi-town project next week. Different one. Different project.
Different project.
Yeah. So something else to keep on?
But something else, you know, put in the back of your mind that there, there is interest in some of some of the other towns in moving forward with it and trying to see if we can resuscitate the, you know, the plan that was already put together and reuse that and use that as a jumping off point to see if there's something that we can do. So I think it would be a great, a great example of a regional historic preservation project to do. Just a matter of getting all, all the towns on board.
Aren't there certain parts already preserved, like Tompkins, Lyman's, Sheat Metal? Is there?
There's parts preserved. I think there's a few tiny sections that are actually on the register, but they would like to see a comprehensive regional study done and really put the entire thing. They've done it in Connecticut, so they'd like to see it done.
You know, several years ago, I had to put historical signs up at the locks designated as part of the Historical District.
Yep.
So Hank, if you can get with the Historical Commission and then get in, get in touch with Heather, then we can get it back on the agenda to have some more conversation about, you know, it might fall off the map.
Another client, I had a lot of the public, bringing up the question of the agricultural commission, which had several terms, some of them were in the national plan. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
We're doing interviews at seven, right?
Seven thirty, one o'clock, yes. So our next, what's the next? I'm just gonna, I'm gonna skip ahead in the agenda so that these fine people who are waiting don't have to wait all night if there's no objections.
He's just having a problem.
Could you work on the agenda, please? Excuse me. I just don't, I wanna pay attention to what's going on and I don't wanna cheat and cheat. Thank you.
Hi. So hi, I'm hoping you're here for the karaoke. Oh, no, you're Harley Davidson. Sorry, let me go over. No, no, it's okay. So we have a one-day liquor license for Wednesday, July sixteenth, from five to ten at Harley Davidson, and I think those men are here.
Yes.
It's all yours.
All right. So what we're looking to put together is a bike night, almost like a cruise night with classic cars, motorcycles, and we're gonna have black music. We're trying to get the community together. We're, the original idea was almost like a block party of all the local businesses in the area to get them down in our area to promote the businesses. We have Sheldon Ice Cream coming, New England Hydroponics, Opa-OPa's gonna be serving actually the beer and wine, and then comes their sausage wagon will be coming to serve some food, and a couple other different, like Tattoo Studio, their Sweet Surprises, which is a big candy truck that we're bringing for kids. It's like candy, they serve cotton candy and ice cream pretty much. So we're just trying to get some local businesses together and promote our businesses well and just have some fun. All the people that are serving food are insured, so we just need the liquor permit or the beer and wine permit. The band would be playing from five o'clock to nine o'clock. Our hopes is to kind of start winding down at nine o'clock. The music is definitely gonna be ending at nine o'clock, and then by ten o'clock, everybody will be gone.
Yeah, I have a question first, but there's two things. It says the liquor license and then quite kind, but the dates are different, so.
July sixteenth or July ninth? July sixteenth. I've got it, I just created my own thing.
Go ahead.
So on the one-day liquor license, how the one-day liquor license works is the ABCC permits the local licensing authority, which in this case is the Board of Slight Men, to review and actually grant the one-day liquor licenses. What happens is they grant it to an individual, non-profit or a business, it doesn't matter, businesses and businesses in general. The only thing they can get is beer and wine only licenses. Now, here's how they work. When you purchase, or when you get one of these licenses, you have to get all of your lic, all of your liquor from an authorized wholesaler in Massachusetts. On the ABCC's website, there's four different lists. They have a manufacturer's list, they have wholesalers list, they have a brewer's list, and they have a wine owner's list. You have to purchase from one of those. The only person who's listed on that is Opa-OPa. That means that the only thing you can do, or for this case, Opa-OPa could actually serve the liquor, or their, rather, the beer and wine, but they can only serve their own beer. They can purchase their own beer for the purpose and they can sell that. They want to sell anything else, other beer or the wine, they can't sell it from their stock. They have to actually purchase it from a wholesaler or manufacturer on one of the lists. They have to get it from there. That's the only way they can do it. You actually have to maintain your receipts because if the board ever chooses to see them, they have the ability to audit it. That's the only way those things work. Unfortunately, it's not as simple as saying, well, they're, or they have a liquor license, they have a Section twelve, so it just transmits to another location that's not it at all. They have a Section twelve for the location where they serve. So they can serve alcohol on their premises, but the moment they leave the premises, whole thing changes and you have to get a special permit, different permit. The other thing is wines that walk, what are they gonna be doing on the-
Uh, they're just advertising.
Okay, they're not gonna be selling alcohol or doing anything or having any alcohol on the premises at all?
No.
So Opa-OPa, because they're a brewery and they're listed here as the Yanni Distributing Company, they're okay, they can, you know, they can use their own alcohol to sell. They just have a whole bunch of their own receipts and they can, you know, they have all their tip certification, they have their insurance and stuff, they're good to go, and they can serve their own liquor or alcohol. If they wanna do wine, they have to purchase it at a wholesaler. So we can give you, I can point you to the list online on the ABCC's website. You have to get it from the list of the authorized wholesalers. This is different from the BYOB stuff that's home and park. This is, you know, you're actually purchasing things to sell it.
Okay.
We would keep it just to their, their, their actual beer. We would keep that-
Oh, you don't, you don't wanna do wine, you just wanna do what's there?
No, we would, we would, the wine is not that big of a deal. We would just keep it to their beer.
Okay. Just make sure they have receipts for whatever they have from their-
It'd be the only thing they'd offer is what they have.
Okay.
Making it simple.
Even better. Just make sure they have receipts of whatever they have because what happens with the one-day permits, especially these ones, is we're supposed to send copies to the ABCC in case they ever have an investigator out in the area and they happen to stop by and, not to say you guys will attract friends, but you might. So it's always possible that one of them will be in the area and be like, hey, we're just gonna swing by and nothing's going on on a Wednesday night, and they'll wanna see what's happening and make sure everything's checked.
All right.
Okay.
Can you guys introduce yourselves, just, yeah, it's okay.
Mike Fabiano, salesman. Andrew's, Ken Richards.
Okay.
Aaron Fabiano.
Another thing, Heather, any food being served, you have to go through the Board of Health to get a permit.
Okay.
Okay, not just because they have insurance. You gotta get permits from them. You don't have the permits, they can't operate.
Okay.
I don't think it's a big deal, but you have to go down and see them.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments or conversation from the board?
I think, you know, one thing I'd like to add is this is, this is a first-line thing for us, and we wanna feel it out too. You know, we, we don't wanna, this doesn't work for us, it doesn't work for the city, it doesn't work for anybody, we won't be doing it again. But I think one of the alternatives is Springfield is just becoming a not-so-fun place to go on bike nights and Thursday nights, and we wanna add a lot smaller atmosphere, more family-oriented place to go, not late, you know, we'll hire a police department to be there for those hours if we need to for traffic control and anything like that. But we wanna feel it out too and just see how it works.
I think it should be noted that the police chief is aware of this and has no current objections to the event, given it's on a Wednesday and anticipated less than a hundred people, so he is.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
All right. Good luck, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a great day. Have a good night.
Be careful.
Boy, health number coming.
Yeah, they are, I mean, that's, they're all- That's all said. Well, and I think-
You can do orange.
They missed all the classic cars.
There's nothing to sign it out of, the whole thing.
Here, so you guys can take a look at that while we move on. Let me know when you're done looking so we can go back to them. So I guess, can we do the PCFs?
Yep.
I think you wanna wait a few more minutes for it to be signed by the fundee in straight now.
Okay.
You wanna do the other license, so-
Yep. So we have an entertainment license for karaoke on Saturday nights at Pizza ninety-nine, and Miss- Um, and this now, I hope I don't butcher the name, Mr. Demadakis? Demadakis?
Close enough.
Has requested a live entertainment license that allows Pizza ninety-nine to have karaoke on Saturday nights from nine to twelve. Um, our current practice has been to issue, um, entertainment licenses that include such things as karaoke. However, our hours are generally limited to eleven o'clock, not twelve o'clock.
Yeah, they used to have that there when it was. I have no idea. I hate karaoke, so, but I know they had it there. There was no, no issues. I think karaoke in Japanese means painful ears or something like that. Also, I mean, I just, uh.
What time do they close?
They close, I think, at one, isn't it?
I was saying, is it midnight or one?
And does anybody else do karaoke in town?
Yeah, I think Opa-Opa does karaoke.
What time do they do it?
Well, all of our entertainment licenses that I could find, I'll say till eleven, the live entertainment.
Till eleven.
So you can just make that one up here.
I think I put it on there that it's till eleven.
So we would, this would be until eleven.
Am I making the motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Do all these things need to be signed, Heather, or just the first one? Um, the next item on the agenda is the Franklin Regional Transit Authority Fiscal fifteen, um, demand responsible contract on the council of paging plus. The contract is in your packet. In blue. Do you all see it in your packet while you're signing?
John doesn't, because I owe you the packet.
This is, is this generally the same as it is every year?
The rest of mine, no, I don't have any changes.
Don't have any changes in it?
No, I don't think there's any changes.
Heather, you didn't get the, uh, the, uh, fees going up on that ridership?
She did not respond.
Does anybody have anything to talk about with the contract for the Council on Aging? No concerns?
Um, there was a, their budget, I believe, is sixteen thousand five hundred plus dollars from Franklin County Trust. Right now, there's a seventeen hundred dollar deficit, okay? I don't know if all the receipts are in from the ridership or not, but, um, we had a meeting about a year ago to talk about, uh, making sure we balance off at the end of the year. So my concern is that, um, if the fees are not enough, we should be talking to the Council on Aging in regards to how to take care of those shortfalls.
The, um, from why, my understanding is that the, the cost to individuals to use the shuttle service is, is very low. Well, I mean, the cost.
A dollar and a dollar, a dollar, a dollar and a dollar fifty.
If I order a wheelchair van to take somebody to an appointment, it's a hundred bucks. So I'm not saying put a burden, but I think if, if you wanna increase the user fee to sort of take an average of what the deficit is, that would keep the program going. And I don't think it, and I know, again, I just, I think that would be the appropriate way to do it. If they're only charging a dollar, you know, maybe a little more than a dollar might be something.
We had a discussion with them about a year and a half ago in regards to not buying the fuel at gas stations. I believe that did save them some money, but I'm not sure if all the receipts are in yet because it's still in the year. But if there is a, um, the deficit, they should, we should be talking to them. And they were gonna come in and talk to us about that. They haven't come in in several months to talk about that.
I would strongly suggest that it should be almost like a revolving fund, sort of self, and you have to figure, it is what it is, it's the cost, you know?
So before we sign this contract, is it fair to say we need to see where they're gonna end the year? And then have a conversation about, um, increasing or not increasing the?
Heather, when do we have to have this signed by?
I don't have a mandate, but I might say that again.
Yeah, but we just stay under the old contract.
I do, we just sign this, we're not gonna do away with it.
Right, it just stays under the old contract, we send it to them.
Can you go back after you sign this and adjust those rider fees? You sign this?
I don't think there's any fees in there. I didn't see any dollar amounts on any fees, that there will be a.
It says fair structure, all trips that originate and end within the same town are a dollar each way. All trips to adjacent towns within the operating service area are a dollar fifty each way. And all trips beyond an adjacent town that are within the operating service are two dollars each way.
All we hold off and get a comment from the council.
You know, we can just go under the old contract until we just figure out what we wanna do about keeping it a sustainable service for the elders, okay? Especially if Prop two and a half does not pass.
So we need to get in touch with Council on Aging, figure out where they're gonna end the year, and then talk about if this is.
We just wanna amend the, the ridership numbers. If, if we, if they're deemed a deficit.
Okay. Um, I guess we can go back to the ones.
You can sign any of them?
I can't sign three of them. So if you say the number, I'll.
All right. We have the proper signatures on this. This is. Payroll warrant fifteen dash one for six hundred, six thousand six hundred ninety-two thousand fifty-four cents for the school department, school revolving choice. So moved. Second. All those in favor? Uh, the next one is a school warrant, uh, P fourteen fifty-three dash one in the amount of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-two thousand seventy-five cents. So moved. Second. All those in favor? Payroll warrant fourteen fifteen, fifty-three dash two, uh, plumbing inspector for a hundred sixty-one, a hundred sixty-eight dollars. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. All those in favor? Sign this one? Warrant PD fourteen dash fifty-one A, one hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. This is for the annuities, the retirement, union dues, group health insurance, group life insurance, health insurance, dental disability, life insurance, and annuities. For a hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. So moved. Second. All those in favor? Warrant fourteen dash fifty-two, one hundred four thousand seventy-seven, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and thirteen cents. This is for Hampshire County Group Insurance, Delta Dental, Hampshire County Group Insurance, Boston Mutual Life Insurance. Selectmen's expenses. Alcohol expenses, et cetera, et cetera. So moved. Do I have a second?
I have a question. This is what we're doing now, we're going through two, two questions because I think going through the.
Is that for this warrant yet?
I believe so.
Yeah, the bill warrant.
Fourteen fifty-two? This is fourteen fifty-two.
Yeah, because we need to be so picky and looking at our, our money. We've got in here, this happens to be for the police department, a computer it looks like, I'm questioning that. But we're charging it to equipment maintenance, which should be, equipment, not equipment maintenance, so it shouldn't be in that account from my thought. What a computer. Looks like a computer, um, it's an Autoplex ninety-twenty. So I don't know if it's for the cruisers or for the, uh, the police station.
I wanna say it's possible, if I remember what Vicki said once upon a time, that the others said it's allowable when you get towards the end of the, um, fiscal year, that if one account is out, but you have a very closely related account, so equipment versus equipment maintenance, that you can take it from that. Perhaps that's what happened there, I don't know, but I'm just gonna take a random guess.
Can we find out about that one? Can you turn it sideways?
And, and the other question I have, again, it's just because it's funny, it's for the police department again, but, uh, it's for a cruiser, it's for Main Street Service. And it says two O-rings and one condenser, three hundred ninety-seven dollars. Is that parts or is that labor, labor? No, the labor is a hundred ninety-five, but two O-rings and one condenser, if it's going into a cruiser, because it has ATF, which is transmission fluid. I mean, a condenser is, and two O-rings are. What, a condenser for what, air conditioning? I don't know. I don't know if that's what it's for. That would be fine, but I, it's just not enough description and I think we need to be a little more careful on these. I know we're winding up last year, but going forward this year, I just, we should be above reproach on these things, I think.
Do you think that cost is too much? I don't know anything about.
Well, depends what kind of condenser. If it's a condenser that sits on the side of a set of points, yeah, they're like eight dollars, it's a condenser for the AC. They don't have points anywhere, the guy. How do you know? Working on my dad's bell before, four bell.
Scott, do you have any problem if we, uh, go ahead and have Heather investigate that? There's, if she deems them all right, they could be all set?
Yeah, that's fine. Again, I don't think there's anything wrong with purchases, I just think we wanna come from properly. Put that comment on there, I'm all set.
So we have a motion. Sign, you have to ask for a second.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Did you turn those sideways?
Uh, there was one other thing that, um, when I was looking at the warrant, the, um, charter, uh, I don't know if things have changed, but I thought their services to us were, uh, like charter services were free with the exception of large involved, uh, computer, uh, um, uh, services. And I noticed, like, in the Ivy Department, there's a fifty-five dollar bill. When I was there, it was never, I never got a fifty-five dollar bill. But I, going through the bills, I saw three or four other departments getting the same fifty-five dollar bill. So I asked Heather to investigate why these charges are coming in, if they knew or if something that you're starting or why aren't they covered under our service agreement. Next one is payroll, um. Payroll P fourteen dash fifty-three, Water Department, uh, for one hundred, no, that's not right. That's all part of. It's Water Department, Building Inspector, General Highway, Health, and various other departments in the town for one hundred and one thousand seven hundred, seventy-one dollars and eighty-four cents.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Payroll warrant PD fourteen dash fifty-three. This is for Medicare, federal withholding tax, state withholding tax, Medicare, preferred compensation and wage garnishment for thirty-seven thousand four hundred ten dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Is there a motion? All those in favor? Hold on. Pass that down. I'll take all those and sign them. Who doesn't sign this one? Okay. Moving on. We have a. We have a PCF for the administrative assistant to the assessor's temporary position. Uh, the Board of Assessors asked that we temporarily replace the vacancy created by Janine LeBree's election to the town clerk's position. They have appointed, um, Ms. Christie Slattery to fill the position until September twelfth or until the position is otherwise filled at a rate of fifteen dollars an hour for up to twenty-five hours per week. The PRF on this position was approved last week and the position is now being advertised. I have both of those here, if anyone would like to look at them, ask questions, or discuss.
Temporary employment survey someone, just, does it?
Up to twelve weeks.
Right, but I'm saying, does it have to be with a person that has experience or is temporary anybody?
I think it's up to the Board of Assessors to make that choice.
Question I have is, why is that person starting without a PCF?
Was that it?
Why was that person started without a PCF and approval from the various courts?
Well, was it, was, was the hiring not done right? Was the hiring not done right?
The PRF was originally, and if I'm incorrect at any point, please someone interrupt me. The PRF was originally submitted to the Personnel Policies and Procedures Board, at which point there was a conversation had between, um, myself, Heather, Anna Path, the chairman of the Board of Assessors, and Art Lawrence, the chairman of the PQB. We discussed waiting to hire this position until after the new fiscal year. We discussed having a decrease in the number of hours for the position based on, uh, the financial situation of the town. Um, we had that discussion, the PRF went back. Uh, we had that discussion again with Joanne Spath on the Board of Assessors. And now I'm looking right at it and I can't. Mr. Swanson, thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Swanson. So the PRF went back. At that point, the PRF did not come back to the PQB, but someone did start in that position.
So it wasn't done correctly or?
I would say that.
It wasn't done correctly? So we don't wanna break the law, so we can't sign it.
You can go down any road you want, Gary, we're here to solve this problem.
No problem.
So, I mean, so what is Mr. Slattery's, excuse me, not Joe Slattery, but what is Gary Swanson's role in this?
He's on the Board of Assessors.
Oh, okay, so he's an assessor? Okay. Are there any other assessors here?
I don't see any.
Is there a minute?
And I'm not even here to address that issue, I darkened your doorstep for other reasons, but I'll be happy since I'm here to address that issue.
Well, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Was there a vote why the assessor is to appoint this person?
Yes, there was.
Do we have copies in the minutes and such, or any discussion about hours and such?
Minutes have not been approved yet, but certainly will be made available.
So the, the proper way to do this was not done the proper way. So it's an illegal hiring of an individual for the town. Can we just go over the proper way so we're all in the same mindset here?
Yeah, I just, I'm just listening to these guys here, so I just wanna make sure what you say.
I'm sorry, but you've, you've addressed it in an incorrect manner. We need to clear the direction. The Board of Assessors has a responsibility to the public. And that is to provide a service. The service which was provided by Janine Donovan, who was elected town clerk, thereby making that position. That service was to have been filled fairly soon, but it turned out that, uh, the three pays, the three Ps committee decided to stonewall the Board of Assessors.
So we're gonna hang up?
For a matter of six weeks. For this reason, the Board of Assessors finally, it was necessary to take appropriate action frankly. Frankly, we felt that we're answering to a higher power, and that is the voters and the people, our constituents, who have a right to get that service provided. We therefore chose to appoint, to temporarily appoint a person until we could go through the entire procedure for a permanent appointment, and that person started a week ago yesterday. The reason why we had to do this outside of the normal purview was because the Personnel Policies Committee, chaired by Mr. Lawrence over here, chose to stonewall us. We chose to react accordingly. That is the background here. We have a person who's in there, who's temporarily working, and we are receiving applications. If we get a better application, we'll act accordingly. At this point, though, we need to provide a service, that is exactly what we're doing, and frankly, we're doing the best we can under the circumstances that were placed before us. And frankly, your board needs to get a grip on three Ps and your front office, because we're getting damn tired of it.
I guess I would just like to address the stonewall part, because I don't feel like that was the case at all. I feel like a conversation was had with the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, being proactive about the position, and if that information wasn't related effectively to the rest of the board, then there's an issue there. There was a conversation having with another member of the Board of Assessors, relaying the same information. I feel like if the PRF was resubmitted even the next day, the PQB is always willing, and has in the last month, met on off times, at any cost. I've had two kids in the room with me, in order to sign off on PRFs and PCFs, had it been submitted again, the policy and the procedure would have been followed. So, I disagree with the stonewalling part, I don't think that that's what happened, but that's just my opinion.
My comment on this is, we have a process. Maybe you don't like the process, but we still have to go through the process. We have a process. I'm talking, Mr. Swanson, I didn't interfere with you when you were talking. We have a process. It goes through a series of signatures. We all abide by that. All right? If there was an excer, if there was a circumstance that needed special attention, I'm sure they would accommodate it, but was that expressed? I mean, the stonewalling, I don't, I don't like the term, I don't think it was done, but you came, a person was started with a proper, without the proper paperwork, which is a town bylaw, and it needs to be done correctly. And I have a concern with that. It wasn't done correctly. And if we're supposed to get a grip on things, as you say, all right, we need to start, all right, with making sure our rules are abided by, by everybody. Just because you don't like the characters involved, or you don't like the way it's going, that is not an excuse to circle-navigate the Policy Procedures Board, the bylaws of the town, the Finance Committee, and this Board of Selectmen. That's my feeling. I don't think you should have done that.
Could I just ask the Board of Selectmen to look on their desk, because I had passed down a PRF for the same position, and it did not come back this way. So, if you could just look on your desk, because I did have it when it went down, and it's not here. Am I correct about that, right there was a...
Hey, you all three?
Yeah, she, you had all three.
I know, and it's not here. Right in front of me?
There's one, two, and three.
We did sign the PRF last night.
Oh, sorry, thank you, it's right here.
And that was not a special meeting?
That was done at the special board, we did a special, uh, PQB meeting, we did a special Board of Selectmen meeting, and then they had their regular Finance Committee meeting last Tuesday, in order to approve all of this in expedited manner.
So, I will also say that after all of the paperwork went through the proper channels, the PRF went back to the PQB, Finance Committee, the PCF has been down the correct paths. All relevant boards have signed off on them. It's now left to the Board of Selectmen.
We asked Mr. Lawrence, it seems like he was...
Sure.
Would you like to say anything, because your name was brought up?
No, not, not really. I mean, if you're going to follow the rules, I think we try to follow the rules, and if you want to circumvent them, that's one thing, but the rules are the rules, and if you don't want a personnel board, get rid of it. But that's, that's the rules, and they would definitely not follow them. That's all I...
Is there any other discussion surrounding...
So, if we don't approve it now, what, what happens?
I assume, I don't really know, I assume it just goes on the record that the Board of Selectmen does not approve. I mean, the person's been working, the person has to be paid.
If you don't approve it, does the person get paid? Is the person being authorized to get paid? I mean, we owe the person, obviously, but...
My comment, we know the person's working in there. Once we know the person's working in there, under the lies of the law, they get paid.
I mean, and the person should be paid, I mean, it's not the person's fault.
But, point is, we do not have a PCF for that person.
So, we can talk about the process of... Go ahead. Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, this is related to the topic, but not specifically to this, so I can wait until you're finished with this discussion, so I took my hand out.
So, I would say that there will be a discussion, and Mr. Lawrence is here for a specific reason, about the process, so that's a conversation that we can hold off on, and get through these PCFs and PRFs, I suppose.
I guess my concern is taking it probably further, what they're going to discuss is, if we do this once, do we do it twice, do we do it three times?
I don't think we should do it once.
Yeah, I agree, the process is very important.
We have to keep the process.
I think you should keep the process, I think you should just make exceptions, because someone had a different opinion. I think there's a process in place.
So, if this has ever happened in the past, what has happened?
It's never happened in the past.
This has never happened in the past.
Since, I've been on the board since two thousand and four.
It has happened in the past, under emergency situations.
I just don't recall...
Emergency situations are like a catastrophe, a hit, and you need a personnel to come to work, and for a limited amount of days.
But I think this is more, this is more contentious about other things, and I think the other things are something for a discussion other time, but I think we, I don't want to violate the law by signing something that was done illegally. I have to, I mean, it has to be done correctly.
Noah?
Maybe I have recalled this, but I thought that the Board of Health temporary employees started working before there was the proper paperwork submitted, because I think Heather, at a select board meeting, said she needed to fill that on an emergency basis, and the PCF followed after that person was already here.
Yeah, the Board Health sometimes is a little different, though.
No, no different. They're on, they're under the Board of Policy Procedures Board.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, and I think I would have to, well, rely on Heather's memory, but I thought she also indicated that if she didn't get somebody in there, because there were other staff changes, that she couldn't handle doing the requests and the things that were needed in that office. So, if the emergency situation is similar to the assessor's, then I think if it was done based on our collection one time, it might continue to be done now, and then put it forward and say, "From now on, these are the steps. If they're not followed, you're not going to have somebody paid." That's all, but...
The situation was considerably different here, this, that, that particular person was brought in on an emergency basis, because it was a Board of Health situation, and we needed coverage in that office. It wasn't a temporary position.
But what constitutes emergency? That's what I'd ask, because the assessors are equally, I benefit from the assessor's administrative assistant on the zoning board, because it's time-sensitive in terms of hearings, of posting, making, you know, the timing of the legal notices, and getting all the proper paperwork in order to properly hear the, um, the case. So, I have benefited from that. Janine Domina has volunteered for the last month to help us finish off, because we had two hearings in June, but she can't do it beyond this month, actually today.
Wait a minute. She has two different, separate jobs you're talking about.
Well, the way you're...
There's two separate jobs. She works, she's your administrative assistant on the zoning board enforcement, but she also happens to be working in the assessor's office.
Correct.
Two separate jobs, not related, jobs are not supposed to be done on each other's time.
Right, and I put my paperwork in, and then I'm going to post on my, the board is, and Heather and Art has been helping trying to get the, and in fact, finance time to up on the financial budget.
So, I think that going forward, if, whatever direction the board chooses to go, with signing or not signing, there needs to be a memo that goes out that states the process, this is how it needs to go, these are the rules, and if putting down dates that, that boards meet, when does the PQB meet regularly? When does the Board of Selectmen meet regularly? That way, people are aware that they have to have paperwork signed by this date. If it's after this date, you can't hire until the paperwork is signed. So, having those dates go out to other boards and committees might be helpful. Having the process in writing a little more clearly will be helpful in avoiding this circumstance or situation again.
The Chair of the PQB has already drafted a memo, it's already gone out this week, I don't think it's included...
So, before we, before we act on that or do that, can we have a motion to sign or not sign the PCF for the Board of Assessors?
If we got signed, it means nothing, the position just goes on, period?
How long is this temporary position for?
For twelve weeks, which is stated in the policy and...
Oh, oh, two twelve weeks, it's still pending as a permanent.
So, this says temporary until September twelfth, or until the position is filled.
Do you ever come sooner?
Whichever comes first.
What's an emergency appointment for? Is there a timeframe on an emergency appointment?
Two weeks.
And the emergency and the temporary are different, because the temporary ones entitle the benefits, with the emergency one is not.
So, that's an issue too. Has anything changed in the hours of the paper position?
Given this PCF, um, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, Janine worked thirty hours, and this position is twenty-five, so there were some hours cut off of the time.
What's the position posted for?
About twenty, twenty-five, twenty and twenty-five. Franzy?
Which kind of gets to my point, which is related, because the original delay, I guess, was requesting, you know, some analysis or some, you know, some information about the length of the number of hours that that individual would have to work, and I'm certainly recommending that between now and the time the next person is hired, whatever, whatever, um, I don't know, observation, information you can gather about the position to determine the appropriate number of hours, because, you know, we need to be fiscally responsible, and if, if the position can be done in fewer hours a week, then, then that should be something that we should be going for. And since the request was made, there seemed to be agreement that, from the Chair of the Assessors Board, that that would be something that she would be willing to look into, I think. I don't want to see that get lost in this discussion.
I have any other questions or concerns?
Just the point, if we have an employee, employees have to be paid, the position had to be filled, and however it wasn't done in a timely manner, it could be our fault, it could be somebody else's fault, bottom line is, it had to be filled. A person has to be paid. You're either part of the process by approving it, or you're not, but the person is still there. So, my suggestion would be to become part of the process, approve the PCF, and then let's get down to a, you know, a coordinated level of cooperation here between all departments, so we don't have any more of this nonsense.
Well, Gary, I have to disagree with you, that we are part of the process, and we are trying to address, as you say, the nonsense. I think it's, one of the difficulties of being on the select boards, you can try to put together a policy, but elected officials just do whatever the hell they want to, because they're elected officials. And that's probably, and their department heads. So, it gets very difficult, as an elected official, trying to tell another elected official how things should be done, when they just do whatever they want to. We have no control over that, Gary, you know that. Okay, so, getting a handle on things and those, and statements like that, sort of makes us sound like we have the ability to do that. We don't. We just don't.
That's well stated, and I think it would be appropriate that all departments and boards, you know, try to work together and do this, you know, by the rules. This only happened because six weeks went by without a service.
But Gary, it's, Gary, it's a true statement that you didn't follow the rules. Is it a true statement?
We didn't follow the rules, but nor did the Personnel Policies take it off and act in a timely manner.
I'm just saying, you didn't follow the rules.
Can I just, when was the original PR, when was the original PRF submitted to the PQB?
I'll go over there.
Because I don't know that it was, I don't know...
I was, I was told by Laurie, that she put a, a PCF in the...
PRF, yeah.
That she put the request in the Personnel Policies box the day after the election. And, you know, there was no positive, uh, action on that.
Mr. Swanson, pass it on.
And the next thing we heard is that three Ps is deciding that it's going to be a less than twenty-hour position, which affects the assessor's ability to attract qualified personnel. And this is a position that requires a certain amount of ability and knowledge in order to do the job right for the, for the people. And we're still trying to accumulate, uh, applicants, applications for the permanent position.
Has the person that you hired, what kind of jo, what kind of experience do they have?
The person that we hired was the former town treasurer.
Well, what type of experience did that person have as an assessor? And what type of training does that person have as an assessor?
Specifically as an assessor, I would say none there.
And any training as an assessor?
I beg your pardon?
Any, any training at all, as an assessor, at all?
No, nor did any other applicant. You know, we're hoping we can get a better field of practice, but again, this permanent position is only going to be, I think it's advertised for the end of this week.
Yeah, I just, you know, the election was May fifth about, right? Our board met on, not till May fifteenth, so I know those time, and that was our next scheduled meeting, was May fifteenth. I think at that time, we asked for a little more analysis to see if the hours could be, um, proper amount of hours to be used to do the job was correct, and I think it took a couple of weeks, at least, before we got any response back, and then I guess some meetings went on. So, there may seem like a six-week delay, but we didn't meet for ten days, we pushed back, and then we didn't get the paperwork back for probably another two weeks.
Right, the original PRF was not submitted until May thirteenth, so that was...
Disagreement, yeah.
Right, so, that's the one that had gone back, and that was not submitted until May thirteenth. And then there was some conversation immediately following this submittal.
I, I should, excuse me, I should point out that, you know, we don't try to tell the boards what to do, I mean, they, they come to us, we, we make sure that the paperwork is correct, basically, and then pass it on to the Finance Committee and the, uh, and you guys. I think that's our, our, our major role, I don't know of any case where we have changed anything as far as hours, or money, or this. Of course, we do score, if it's a new position, we do figure out what the, what the salary raise would be, we do things of that nature. But, uh, and in this case, was a special case because of... We do things of that nature. But, and in this case was a special case because of all the financial things going on in the town, that Liz and Heather and Anna and myself sat down just to discuss to see if something could be done here as far as the hours. Did you really need these numbers? I think this type of question's been throughout the town, as obviously you people know. So, that's the bottom line as far as the board. Now, hell, excuse my French. I'm new to this thing. I'm a retired engineer and not a HR expert, so there's a lot of stuff coming at us right around the first of May because of the elections and then all the budgetary things. A lot of positions have needed to get filled. And there's only so many, you know, we only meet once a month theoretically, though we've probably met four or five times in the month to try to take care of these requests, so.
I do have one question. I know, you know, and I approved signing the PRF and the pay scale from twelve, anywhere from twelve to fifteen fifty. And I saw the payroll today, and the person in the position who doesn't have any experience as an assessor or in this kind of position is being paid fifteen dollars. So, I'm just wondering what kind of discussion was had about what to pay that person going in? Because if you're gonna start paying them at the top of the scale and you're admitting that they don't have any experience, I'm just wondering how that thought process went.
David asked a specific question, and I gave a specific answer. The person that we put in there had nine years' experience in, in the, you know, as town treasurer collector prior to Donna. It also worked as a clerk. I forgot, but this goes way back as this report in that... She worked in the assessors' board at one time, I don't know for how long. But she was mainly put into that position because she had physical, financial knowledge. She knew the types of paperwork that get transferred between the assessors' board and the treasurer collector's office, having been the treasurer collector. Basically, what we did was put a person in there to get the ground right, and essentially that's what's happened so far. Whether this is a permanent applicant or not, we can't say. We have to do all the other applicants.
Okay, so I'm just...
And we hope to get more in.
I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about the thought process on how much you're paying that person?
We didn't pay the top scale.
You're only off by fifty cents. You're only off by fifty cents.
Yeah.
So, someone with not, no experience as an assessor, I mean, I guess that just leaves me to wonder, if you hire somebody now who does have experience as an assessor, what do you pay them? You know, you're paying somebody without experience the top of the scale. What happens to somebody with experience?
It's the top of the current scale. Basically, what the Board of Assessors did, if I had it before I... What they did was to reduce, I shouldn't say before, but it was, I was praying, my first meeting. Reduced the time from thirty to twenty-five hours, which is a substantial reduction on an annualized basis. And where the previous experienced person who held that position was earning, I would have to check it now, but it was in excess of the upper end of the scale that we, you know, put out for the new position. So, basically, we reduced both the salary range and the number of hours as a cost-cutting measure already. So, when you say it's the top of the scale, you're close to the top of the new scale. It is not equivalent to what the old, you know, existed, previously existed. We felt it was appropriate to discuss amongst the assessors, and the action was taken to a temporary basis. I was personally, yeah, to rate fifteen dollars. And, you know, at least we would have the position filled, the service would be rendered, and we would be able to at least move on with, you know, in an appropriate manner, that's all we can get. We did the best we could under the circumstances.
Is there any other discussion or would anyone like to take action on this? Okay.
I mean, I have concerns that, you know, I don't think it's appropriate to raise at this point, but, and I don't want to be accused of doing anything like that, I guess, so.
So, would it be fair to say perhaps we should find out what repercussions there are if we don't sign it? And what repercussions there are if we do sign it? And then move forward?
I would just, yeah, I would think that would be appropriate.
Mrs. Swanson?
I'm just curious, because Linda hired Derek to work in a temporary position. When he started working, his PCF had not been signed by all four, so, you know, I think sometimes this just happens. So, if you already have a process under this...
The PCF wasn't signed or the PRF? Because this trouble started with the PRF. So, if the PRF went through the right way and that was posted, then the PCF might have been delayed, but at least the process was beginning, began appropriately.
And with the Board of Health, they were adequate, you know, know this, beyond the last. I mean, you know, they had several weeks, so what was the...
But there was, there was no intent to actually do something that was inappropriate. I mean, it just happened. But, right, Gary's own words in saying that he did not follow the rules intentionally.
Okay, so I think that we can go around and around.
I think the board promised to, and because you have volunteer boards, a substance in the mailbox is in here for a long time. It takes time for it to process.
I think that we can go around and around and around about this for a very long time. However, I think that the board needs to make a decision to either A, get the information, one way or another. I don't know if we need a motion to do that. B, motion to sign. C, motion to not sign. And then go forward with a memo, so A, the posting and the procedures and the dates of the following due so that we don't run into this problem again.
I make a motion not to sign it at this time.
Do you want to have that motion contingent on getting any information or just not to sign and drop it?
I think we should, you know, check out if we can sign it, even though the process wasn't following. But at this time, I don't feel comfortable signing.
Is there a second?
I wouldn't like to have further discussion.
You want to discuss this further?
Yes.
So, then we need a second.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, so we'll open this conversation up to discussion again. Mr. Paul.
I don't mean to pontificate or anything, but I did serve in a policy procedures board for close to twenty-something-plus years. And we've had some difficulties in those times trying to get processes and people and committees taken care of. But we've always gone one hundred percent to try to get this done in an orderly fashion. What disturbs me is there's a process, everybody in this room knows the process. You gotta go and get it posted. You gotta go and make your recommendations based on interviews and who you're gonna hire. And along the process, this board's notified by a posting, that there's a new job posting. I didn't see the posting until I came in to a hearing with the Finance Committee, who had an emergency meeting to sign that, and I was there as a guest for other financial issues. But I was surprised the posting was being done and we had somebody already working. Now, I just want to go on record to say that we have rules and we need to follow the rules. Whether people have difficulties getting their department functioning, you need to walk in and talk to people. You want to throw it in the mailbox, or you want to ignore it until somebody picks it up and starts action on it, it's one thing. But I, as a department head in the past, would make sure that if it was important enough to me, I would be communicating with people that were involved here to get this through a process so it wouldn't waste time, it wouldn't put an embarrassment on the town, and we wouldn't be bucking each other like we are now. I think that this process is a good process. I don't know if there's personalities involved here or what, but I'm gonna tell you right now, I am not happy on how this was handled by the assessors, all right? I thought that there should be an open door of communication and not to blind tie this board to put us in a position like we are now. There are rules. There are, that we have. There are bylaws that are passed by the two-thirds of the town to follow, and I intend to follow them, okay? Now, I know you had issues in your office. You needed to fill the position. But at any point, did you go and communicate verbally with somebody to do this, other than stick it in the mailbox and see what happens? I don't know. I'm asking you a question.
Me personally?
You, you as a member of the Board of Assessors.
I was under the impression that it had been properly handled.
Well, obviously, I think all, everybody here can say now it wasn't properly handled, without throwing blame at anybody. Am I right? I don't think it was handled properly, and I don't think the rest of the board.
They didn't handle properly either, and the assessors were put in an unviable position, would not be able to...
But if there was a, if there was communication other than sticking it in the mailbox and say, hey, they didn't pick up their mail for two weeks, or they didn't pick it up for a week. Nobody's a mind reader when somebody sticks something in a mailbox, all right? Did anybody take a physical, a walk down the hall to talk to Art, or to talk to somebody in the Finance Committee, or the Chairman of the Board to say, hey, we have an issue. We've got a problem. We need to fill this position? Nothing, nothing was done like that. It was just like a bulldog going through a china shop saying, make way, we're gonna get our way. That's how it appears to me.
Mrs. Swanson?
It was mentioned by, like, the June nineteenth meeting, the three Ps had a meeting, and it was at the end of the meeting.
The public hearing. That was a...
And I think Gary mentioned that this person was gonna be starting, and Mr. Lawrence said, you were having a meeting on Monday, and he would process the paperwork, so there was discussion.
Well, that meeting that was posted, I happened to notice had received, like, a stamp from the town clerk on it, but every other meeting that's received by the town clerk has generally a time and the town clerk's initials on it, and that meeting had none of these above. So, we were not aware of that meeting. No one told us about that meeting, yet it was posted and not properly signed or timed.
Which meeting are you talking about? The Monday following the...
The meeting that was posted, the joint meeting between the PQB and the Board of Assessors, the same night as the open meeting to talk about the PQB bylaw.
But there was discussion at that meeting anyway. I mean, Mr. Lawrence...
Well, the discussion might have happened at that point had we known that someone wanted to have a joint meeting, but we didn't know that.
But the discussion was between Gary and the...
I don't think it was clearly stated that someone was going, I happened to hear the words, going to start, but I'm not sure that that was clearly and effectively communicated to the rest of the board.
Well, he answered, Gary, though, and said, that's fine. I'll take care, we'll take care...
We'll talk about it at our next meeting.
We'll take care of the paperwork, I think is what was said.
All right, so...
Bottom line is, we're running around with...
Right, we are. So, let's move forward. There's only one, there's, there's three options. Sign it, don't sign it.
There's already a motion.
There's a motion and a second. There was some further discussion. Is there any other discussion?
Just a little bit. We've had a lot of findings in the past of how we haven't done things appropriately, and they keep coming up in the annual reports. We've got a town administrator now, I think, should be a go-to person for any of these issues. People in town, oh, I should be able to go to her and say, Heather, I've got an issue. How can you help? And she'll jump in and help. And second, if we don't follow our own policies and procedures, we're gonna get these findings. And going into the next year, if Proposition Two and a Half doesn't pass, we're gonna have a lot of these meetings with people where we gotta say, these are the rules we need to follow. So, person needs to get paid. I agree with that a hundred percent. But I don't think we should just, we need to be part of the process or the solution, as Mr. Swanson said. But I think the opposite of what he was referring to, we need to go with the rules and go past that. That's the way I would go.
Just a comment. It's, here's a PCF. The department head recommends it, the position. It goes to the policy procedures to take an additional recommendation. Then it goes to Finance to make another additional recommendation, make sure there's financial funds associated with that position. And then, the final thing, it comes for approval by the Board of Selectmen. All the others are recommended. We're the approval process.
Nilda?
I would caution the board to not start as of this evening, to make this one particular case the example, because there have been other situations that have occurred that have, people need to be paid. Once they're on the job, they need to be paid. You can't deny them that. And now Mr. Lawrence has prepared a draft of procedural steps that need to be, once you're on notice about that, then you can take this action of saying, okay, you know the rules, play by the rules, and if you don't, you're not gonna get approved. But it would be...
I don't think anyone disagrees. I think everyone feels that the person should be paid. It's whether or not you signed this paper that says, yes, we think the process was followed correctly, or no, we don't think the process was followed correctly.
I think that the final document says the patient, the patient, sorry. The person is hired. Once the Board of Selectmen signs it, the person is hired. So, one could argue that the person really hasn't been hired by the town yet, because it has been approved by the Board of Selectmen. Even though they're in that position working, technically, that hasn't been signed, and they're not actually hired.
But they have funds in their budget. The other thing you can look at is, they have no money. They have no authority to proceed with doing a temporary or hiring, and therefore, you're not getting approved. They have the funds, and so therefore, the only...
That doesn't make it right in itself. Just because there's money there, it doesn't mean you should navigate all the processes.
Well, but...
No, it doesn't.
Question it. Let me finish my sentence. There was a D. And as long as the funds were there, you know, what happened between, I don't know. But I think it would be a very bad time to use our...
I, I have to, I have to agree with you, but the point is, there's a lack of communication. There is, nobody has informed, you know, the town, that's the whole board here, that there was an emergency in their office. They need to do something right away, all right? You know, we've had several meetings since the election. Nobody's come in and said, we have an issue, so we can get on board.
And Nilda, I'm not trying to make an example. I'm just saying it wasn't done right. You know what I'm saying? It wasn't done right. So, we say, oh, that's okay. I mean, I think what John's trying to say is, we really sort of have to do it the right way. Sorry. I know you're a person of process, by the way. You want things A, B, C.
Okay, transparency, right. So, any conversation, different way. We have a motion. We have a second. Motion is to not sign the PCF tonight. Is there more discussion or...
All the questions. Oh, is she coming back? I'm sorry. Okay, wait. So, US men's loss, sorry.
Yes, they do.
Two to one.
Over two to one.
Two to one.
Extra time. I think it was extra time.
Art, do you have a suggestion? Do you have a suggestion, other than what the motion?
You know, personally, I think we should, you should sign it, and we should move on. I think that everybody now understands, hopefully, I sent the memoir out, or hopefully Heather sent it out there, all the department heads, appointing authorities, and everybody else you could think of that hires people. I think it explains, I mean, I wrote it, but I, you know, I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but I think it explains the process exactly if we follow that. And people have to realize that, you know, it just can't happen overnight, and it shouldn't happen overnight. And I also like the process. First, I thought it was very convoluted, like, you know, you come from industry, you hire somebody overnight. I mean, you know, you hire somebody in an hour. Here, I understand to make sure it's done correctly. So, and then we will have special meetings if it's important. Like I said, we've had four or five of these, so. But I would say, yes, let's sign it, let's move on. And I think everybody now, hopefully, realizes what the correct way is. And, you know, I mean, I'm here all the time, as you know, helping Heather out until she can find somebody. She does have, she does have a PRF, and she will have a PQB... She does have, she does have a PRF, and she will have a PCF signed. And, yeah, and maybe we could have communicated better. I agree with Mr. Swanson, that's always, communication is always an issue.
How's the Finance Committee feel about this?
Well, from a fiscal perspective, you know, if Anna feels that they need to have twenty to twenty-five hours, I guess the question we always discuss is a twenty or twenty-five, and what is required to hire, then, you know, I think that we signed it and approved it from a fiscal perspective. I, I think even, you know, like, we've said about the process, if Art, and we sign a PQB, then it takes time, then we can't just have an emergency meeting in twenty-four hours on the Finance Committee, you have the post, you have regulations that have to be posted for that, and then it has to try to get down to here, so, you know, even if something was stated that we, we were gonna meet on Monday from a PQB standpoint, that didn't mean the process was gonna be done Monday, because that's just one level, so. But from the Finance Committee perspective, you know, we felt fiscally it was okay. And especially since the actual position has been posted now for the full-time. Instead of just bringing this person in as a full-time person that didn't go through the process, at least we're here from a temporary, and we can complete the process in the posting for the full-time position.
Just, 'cause we have a couple, Mr. Byrne. So, if we approve this tonight, and it happens again, what is our stand? That the person is not gonna be paid, or the person will go home?
They should, I mean, we should be, I mean, what, my feeling is, if we, if it happens again, and we're aware of it. Problem is, we, we didn't have a meeting last week, so we can respond to the other meeting. Maybe, maybe, I hope it doesn't happen again, but maybe we need an emergency meeting to address it, to.
I'm saying, if, if somebody, if the department goes. We should have a, something that.
Well, we should be working, let's have a true PCF.
Right, what happens if something just happens again?
That was one of my questions I had, was as the Chair or Selectman, what role do I play? And if I know someone's working and the paperwork is not approved, is there anything that I can do or should be doing? Or? What, what do you do? You know, so I guess that's something that we need to find out and discuss, but maybe not at this very moment, because we have an interview at seven-thirty, and we need to take action on this PCF.
I still, I'm still in favor of not signing this at this time.
So, there's a motion on the floor to not sign the PCF. There's a second.
'Cause I, you know, again, going back to the statements I made earlier, an elected official will do what an elected official will do. I'm elected here to follow the bylaws of the town, master the law. And if I vote in favor of this, I feel that I am violating the bylaws of the town. Steps are in place, people will know these steps. And by his own admission, Mr. Swanson said that he did not do it properly. So, that's really not gonna deter anyone in the future, in my opinion.
Is there still a second?
Well, there was a second, first, motion, I'm second already.
John, you have a second.
No, it was a second. Oh, it was a second, I'm sorry, yes, for conversation, yes, yes.
So, given that, I guess we vote? Do we need a poll call vote, what do we do?
No, so, the, the motions is, so everybody votes correctly, but so don't get confused. The motion I made was not to sign this. So, if you vote yes, we do not sign, if you vote no, then someone has to make a second motion to go forward.
So, all those in favor of not signing it, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of signing it, say nay.
No, no, just question, those in favor of not signing it, say no.
Those in favor of not signing it, say no. No?
So, there is.
Is that the three extensions?
I just don't think we're resolving it. All right, so then, I'll make a motion to sign this. Just to move things along. Look, it is what it is, I have my other concerns, I'm not gonna bring up the political nature, but I'll make a motion to sign this to move on.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, but I, I have something I want changed on here, I don't think it's proper. It says temporary to nine thirteen, nine twelve fourteen, or until a, a person is available to fill a position. It's twelve weeks, that's all it is, and that or should be stronger.
Whatever occurs sooner should.
Yeah, it should say whatever occurs.
It's got the date though, day two.
Yeah, it has the date, or until the position is filled, so it can't go past that.
It can't go past that date.
Right here.
Yeah, and if I, from my point of.
Without another renewal.
From my point of view, I, I don't think we should do another renewal, I know that upfront. We've done that in the past.
So, there's a motion to sign the PCF, there's a second. Derek says, "Is there any other discussion?" Okay, all those in favor of signing the PCF for the Board of Assessors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those not in favor?
No.
So, the motion gap is in the sign.
If you go with your feelings, please.
No, I agree.
So, there's another one on here, and I, we're gonna have to go back, because we do have a seven-thirty interview for the building commissioner and zoning code officer, is Mr. Quinlan in the room? Hi, sir.
How are you doing?
Good thanks, how are you? Would you mind having a seat right over there on the side?
Hi.
Thank you.
Get out of your twelve. Sorry you had to go through that.
That's all right.
Um, just before we start this interview, I would just like to say that at eight o'clock, we're gonna take a short break, not to rush you, but I think we're all anxiously awaiting the results of the election going on next door.
Sure.
And just for those at home, now, those in the audience who are currently at eighteen hundred voters. The highest we've ever had, to my understanding, is nine hun, eighteen hundred. The highest we've ever had, to my knowledge, was nine hundred, and that was achieved at the last local election in May, so we have now doubled that amount.
What about presidential?
We have three thousand six hundred registered voters, give or take, in the town of Southhampton.
Presidential are usually pretty high, too.
You're talking about special elections.
I don't know, I'm not sure what. As far as just of the record, we're doing pretty good.
That's very good.
So, um, hi, welcome, thanks for coming, I saw you sitting in the back.
Thank you.
Getting a history lesson and seeing what things look like. So, I guess I'll start, could you just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this position?
I've been working in the construction business since I was probably ten, helping my dad. I graduated high school from Hopkins Academy in Hadley when I was, in eighty-five. And continued working for him, did an apprenticeship, and started my own business, Quinlan Builders. And for over twenty years, did developing, commercial, residential. Hired people, had, had people working under me, subcontractors. I've arranged payroll, arranged estimating, estimating the jobs, completing them, dealt with, you know, many of the building inspectors in the area. And in February, I started working as a local inspector with East Hampton, part-time. And then in May, started in, part-time as well in Greenfield. And since then, have passed the first test, one A. And the only reason I haven't taken the second one is because I'm taking on Saturday mornings, the class with one of the state inspectors. And I have one more week of it, and then I plan on scheduling the final test right away.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
He's looking at you guys. Well, thank you so much for coming and talking to us.
Thank you for having me.
I'm just curious, do you have any experience in going to court for zoning issues, or have you ever had to enforce a situation where a person in town is not following the recommended bylaws?
I've actually gotten into it a little bit between East Hampton and Greenfield, and I haven't gone to court directly myself. But followed a lot with the Commissioners, and actually, the other full-timer that is doing that right now, currently there. And when I'm, I've had to deal with a few zoning as far as, between two property owners. The rooster in one town, and that, you know, I work well with people, and, and I still, you know, more to learn with it, but it's something that I have started with, yes.
So, you have poultry experience?
Yes.
David?
Oh, the only reason I bring that up, is not going to shoot with a chicken, so.
Right, right.
We're laughing at ourselves in this small town. So, so, one A, so that's the, the base, it's just to be a building inspector, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
And then, when you, what's the name of the next test?
The one B.
One B. And when you pass one B, does that make you a Commissioner, or you still have to take another test?
You have one more test.
Okay, and what's your thoughts about that one more test, to be a Commissioner?
Uh, well, it's actually five total tests to become a Commissioner. And I plan on, you know, going right through, right, the, the class I've been taking, the last twelve weeks, I believe it is, is for the first, you know, first three.
All right.
And then I, you know, plan on going and taking the other two right after.
So, I think in the past, when our building inspector was going through some of the steps, he was working on the guise of the directorship of a building commissioner in Holyoke at the time.
Okay.
So, you're, you're, you're doing that now, right?
Yes, sir, yes.
Are you still in the construction trade yourself currently, or?
I help my dad once in a while, but I really would like to, you know, do this full-time, this, this opportunity came up, and I'm very excited about it.
Have you looked at any of the, the town bylaws at all with Southampton, or?
Not as yet, no, sir.
And if you were to start, when would you be able to start?
I would have to talk with the, you know, my Commissioners that I'm working for now, and, and, you know, give them a notice, but as soon as possible, otherwise.
How many hours are you putting in with Greenfield and East Hampton right now?
East Hampton is sixteen, and Greenfield is nineteen.
Weekly, so you're thirty-five hours a week or so?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And have you any experience doing commercial as well, or just residential?
Yes, I've done, you know, worked on many commercial products, and have been doing the inspections on, on some, in this short period of time since, you know, February.
Do you have any questions for us?
Hold on, we have others.
Hang on, I want to hear his questions, so then I can.
Oh, oh, okay, you want to jump ahead.
I feel like I'm blowing the guy here, I just wanna have a conversation with them.
I got you.
All right?
Sorry, I thought you were jumping ahead.
No, I just, you know, what shoe size do you have? I mean, come on, at some point, you have to have a conversation, so that.
I get it, I just didn't see the direction you were heading up.
Yes, Your Honor, um, sorry. Relax, it's, it's okay. But seriously, why Southampton, what have you heard about Southampton and whatnot?
Never heard anything bad, I mean, it's, uh, it'd be, you know, a great fit, I think, I, I could work well with everybody here, I mean, I work well with people to begin with. And a people person, and actually, in the twenty-plus years in the work field, I haven't done a lot in Southampton, I don't know whether that would be a, a good or a bad thing, but you know, my work was more ambrous, Northampton, Hadley.
And the role of inspection, so are you going around in the town of Greenfield and East Hampton, doing, what is it called, not producing, what's it called? Enforcer?
Yes.
You have, do you spend time of the thirty-five hours actually doing enforcement, or are you just sort of said, go, you know, the Commissioner says, "Go over here, go over there," is that sort of the type of?
A little of everything, I'm, I'm in the office, I, you know, scheduling the appointments, going out and doing inspections, reviewing the plans.
And the budgetary process, you said something about, you know, doing your own payroll, have you worked at all with East Hampton or Greenfield, with developing a budget for the office, any input or quote unquote?
No, I have not.
Okay, all right, thanks for talking about.
A yield to the chairperson.
Thank you.
How's your mom doing? I know, going well, she's.
Oh, okay, all right.
I heard about you growing up. Are you the one-two children?
Yes.
She babysits often, right?
Yes.
Your mom and I used to work together for about ten years. Tell her I said aye.
I will.
I heard a lot about the projects you and your dad did, and some real high-quality homes in Hadley, and I have a few of them, so. Heard a lot of good about your reputation as a, as a builder, so. I'm glad your mom didn't say any medical Southampton, by the way.
Oh.
Yeah, no, I, I heard an awful lot about you and your dad, met your dad a number of times, and I guess that the quality of houses I've seen is very commendable, so it's a great. You wanna get out of the business yourself, and, and get into more of a steady position, is that it?
Correct.
Now, is your dad retired, or?
He still does little, little jobs, no, no.
So, you're coming here, and the salary is, is fifty thousand, you know that, right?
Yes.
So, you're okay with that and the benefits? You're only in Hadley, so you're not far away, so you're available after hours, or get emergencies and all that?
Yes.
I don't have any questions right at the moment, but. Ed, you want?
Tom, um, this particular job has, you know, a lot of responsibility to it, not just the building codes, but also the enforcement of our bylaws and rules and regulations. And, um, with that said, that constitutes about half, they're split in half, you know. So, you know, some weeks, you might not have that much enforcement, other weeks, you might have a whole week of enforcement. But what this job does entail is to go out, go out and look for violations, and to resolve them properly. And I just wanna know what kind of experience you have with enforcement?
Um, I've been doing the, well, an example, Williston, I did all their inspections on the dorms and all, a couple of months ago, before the camps and that start, I a lot of the restaurants and things, and things like that, I've, I've been out with the Commissioners and, and at first, and have done some on my own now. And, um, pretty much since February, you know, I've done quite a few of the, a little of everything, and I haven't, um.
What is, uh, what kind of experience have you had finding people working without permits?
Probably one a week.
One a week?
Yep.
How will you handle those?
I stop, introduce myself, ask who's in charge, and see if they realize that they, you know, need the permit, you know, what they're doing, and let them know they need to, you know, come down to get the permit, if they, they're, you know, wrong and do need to, and you know, if they have a roof strip, obviously, you can't make them just stop, because the, you know, homeowners are gonna, you know, be hurt because of the storm or something, so as long as everything's, you know, taken care of, it's, um, like I said, it's been about one a week, and it's, it's been pretty, it's, it's been okay, nobody's.
They'll resolve them.
Yes, yes.
At your level right now, you're, you passed the first test, that is strictly what, residential?
Yes, sir.
The second one is more commercial?
Correct.
The third is more, third and fourth story work?
Uh, fire, it gets into more fire and sprinklers.
No, there's five tests, tests in the whole game, but what is the fourth and fifth one?
It's gonna be more of the, um, a little legal, and, you know, more of the code enforcement in that.
Okay. But the first one you have already been certified is basically for residential, which is a lion's share of ours.
Yes.
We have commercial, but, um, when do you think you could complete the first three exams?
I actually was scheduled for the second, it was probably a month ago, and, you know, since I had signed up for the class and had been taking the class, I postponed it, so I'm all, you know, just.
Think you could get it by Christmas?
Oh, definitely, yes, sir.
Do you have the job description in here, in that? Requirements, the job.
Probably headed the first round. Sorry. Um, it's a, you have a brief outline of the pre-re, pre-qualifications on the first sheet of paper.
Tom, um, your predecessor started very early in the morning, and I think you realize that's when you see most of your contractors.
Yeah, that's, those are great hours.
That is a good habit, I hope you plan on doing that if you're given a job, because I think it'll make your life a lot easier.
It's definitely, the few that do it is a, it's a great practice, a very, and I'd definitely keep that if I had the opportunity here.
No.
Um, so the salary for this position is budgeted at fifty thousand dollars, is that? Um, so the salary for this position is budgeted at fifty thousand dollars. Is that something that you're comfortable with?
Yes.
Is that a good number?
Yes.
Are there any other questions from the board?
No, but just to clarify, I think you said you're gonna get out of the, the building and at least during these, these hours here, so you're gonna be, uh, here first and whatever you're doing is a side end of it, right?
Correct.
How do you do on any real estate? Cause you have a realtor's license. Are you still using that?
Um, no, actually I don't.
Are there any questions from the audience? Do you have any questions for us?
I think you answered most of them as we went along, so.
Which is retired and gone, so we can't look to him.
No.
Tell us about your chicken. What's your chicken story about?
The, uh, rooster, the neighbors complaining about the rooster.
By noise or?
By the noise, yes.
And what was the resolution?
It's in the process with letters to, it's, it's supposed to be, you know, taken care of. The homeowner's gonna, you know.
There's still a rooster?
So it's under noise ordinance or is it?
Correct.
Is it a farm or is it?
No, it's residential.
Residential, so it's noise ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. That's in East Hampton?
Actually, Greenfield.
Greenfield.
Yeah, there was one Joe handled in, in East Hampton as well, so it's everywhere.
We have something about a chicken in the.
Oh, but we have a rooster.
But no, is it chicken, wasn't?
Yeah, but, but I have a rooster.
Okay.
You got a new one then?
You got a new one then?
I have a rooster.
Cause we had something about the chicken manure.
Oh, okay.
Being an issue. I don't know if you've been across.
No, not yet.
Small town, town. You're from Hadley, so.
That's same rate, correct.
Well, if no one has any other questions?
What's the timeline we're looking at these days?
The position is posted until filled, so we'll have to do that in the afternoon.
Okay. I have another question.
Uh, what, what's the earliest, if you're offered the job, what's the earliest you could start?
Um, as soon as possible. I just would like to check with, you know, like I said, my two commissioners now and.
Do you get a two-week notice?
Yes, I would assume that would be fine with them.
Would you agree to make the contingent by passing the final three stages of the year exams?
Yes.
Well, thank you so much. Again, you know, I appreciate having you.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Comment on time, thank you.
Getting back to him.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
David, someone, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to take a recess?
Um, no, not yet.
Can I make a suggestion on, uh, procedure here?
On what?
Just on the procedural thing?
Sure.
Does anybody else have any copies of the applications for this job?
I'm sorry?
Does anybody else have copies of this application?
No, I don't generally make copies of it. I have to, um, there's social security information and personal contact information, so.
I was gonna say, on the future applications, can you black out the social security number?
Well, you could, but I need to know how many copies I'm making, otherwise it's possible.
I mean, I don't think anybody needs to know the social security number, not when they get it, period.
Yeah.
Because this, this gets out, you know. Why don't we take time across from us now?
Well, generally, I collect them back and then shred. I keep one copy for the fire and that's it. You know what I'm saying? Alright, so can we go to the P, uh, alright, I'll do this one. We have a PRF for the animal inspector, which is, I suppose, Heather? Oh, nevermind, I got it, it's right here. Um, so we have a PRF for the animal inspector, that's right here, if anybody wants to look at it. And we also have a PRF to fill the position on, for the zoning board of appeals, clerical position, also right here.
Question on the animal inspector, it was when the last, uh, board health agent was here, it got rolled into his salary. Is this?
Yeah, we had a, we had a position that was separate and then we rolled that in after the other person.
So is that not something the new board?
I don't know, I don't know. I'm assuming it, it's not, they posted it differently.
The only reason I say that is because one of the reasons our board health agency is because we don't pay much.
I don't think that was rolled into it. I think that was on top of it.
Well, no, on top of it, because at our, the finance man, we're doing the budget, they rolled that position into his, to give him more money to help keep him a stay, keep, keep him a stay, but it didn't work.
I think right now they're posting the position, see if someone's interested in it.
Yeah, I have it here.
Or a certain amount of training and a certain amount of availability. So I think once it's posted, she's interested in, you're helping to fill a platform, but at the meantime, it also provides the opportunity for a talent promotion person who would be interested in doing such a thing. They're also working closely with Randall, who does the, his folks used to do the dog officer position, see if they can roll it into one.
Make a motion to sign.
I think when Adam was here and went before policies and procedures and he was the animal inspector, his time was to be kept separate and.
That's true. Yeah.
Yeah, it was, I think Adam was taking care of a highway board, so they were two separate.
Separate, he just happened to hold the position.
He held the position, but he had to keep his time.
Separate, okay.
I make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And there's also a PCF for the zoning, clerical zoning board of appeals.
Is that a change in the salary line to hourly rates or not? Do we know, was that, was that what it was before?
Not a range.
It's just a pay.
High scale.
Kind of like the beginning.
That's it?
That's the beginning. Oh, that's, that's right, there's a state.
No, I mean for the town clerk, the, the clerical position is.
For the zoning board?
Fifteen dollars and eight cents an hour, was that what it was before or has that changed?
He's backing up to the, um, PCF, the temporary, I believe it's less than what you mean, is now.
Okay. Wrong direction, apologize.
Is there a motion?
Making a motion to, uh, exempt or approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Put the eleven, we're not quite there yet. Okay, so moving along, checking the time. We have. Um, we have approved, we need to approve some approved vacation time. Do you have paperwork for that stuff, Heather?
Yes, ma'am.
I know I said eight o'clock, but I'm just gonna wait a few minutes till after eight cause I think it'll take them some time to run.
Are they still in line?
No.
Just push the button.
It comes on, it's done, it's automatic.
Alright, so let's see if we can get one off my list.
Yeah, the people, if they're in line by eight, they have to get the chance.
Where's mine?
Stretching my legs.
Yeah, yeah.
Stretching back at that chair.
Right, so the first, we have, um, approved vacation time for Rachel Eksek who retired from the, um, building inspector's position and we need to approve paying the accrued vacation time.
That's not true, but the, the payroll department, right?
Has it been, is it been verified?
Yes, payroll wrote up their numbers. Yes.
Make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, take five minute recess?
We'll get two more and then we will. We have. We have, uh.
You guys got to go up there and shh.
Listen, we have carryover vacation for Randall Kemp, the highway superintendent. This was previously approved by the PQB. Uh, the current personal bylaws state that requests need to be approved by the PQB and the appointing authority. He has a letter here, would you like me to read it? It says, "Since taking over as highway superintendent, I have had a very busy transitional period with many issues that have required my attention. I suspected this would be the case and brought my concern up to the select board in January of this year when I was offered the position. Per select board suggestion, I'm requesting that a week of my unused vacation time be ruled over to fiscal fifteen, as I have not had the opportunity, uh, forward to hearing from you regarding this matter. Thank you, Randall Kemp."
Have we done that in the past?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And we have one more, and this is an amendment to Heather's contract regarding the wording of, um, personal sick and vacation time and changing it to, um, reflect what the, um, contract negotiations, contract negotiations suggested, and we called it flex time. This was approved at our last meeting, we just need to sign, um, the adjustments. Anyone like to read it?
We are reported to do this, though.
Yes, and we approved the contract.
So after you look at it, I would accept a motion. Hold on. And I'll say, do we have any further discussion, then I'll call on you. You can pass those on.
Make a motion to approve, even though we already signed, we already.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? No, no, go ahead.
Um, classification, um, are you making changes to Heather's original contract? That was in effect when she got hired?
Yeah, so when we had gone into negotiations for contract, we talked about the amount of time that she had for personal sick, personal sick and vacation time.
The first time.
The first time. And the board and her decided that we would call it flex time because we didn't feel the need to say, you know, yes, I'm sick, no, I'm not, yes, I'm going on vacation, yes, I have a doctor's appointment, I need the day off, we would call it flex time. And that time could be used as she wanted. But when the contract was written, it was broken down into vacation, sick and personal days, which was not the original intent. So we met and the board voted to have the contract amended, to reflect those days as a total and call it flex time.
It's a combination of all those benefits that were outlined in the first contract and then flex time does not, it wouldn't exceed or, or mid, uh.
Doesn't.
Reduce the hours that she's currently working.
It doesn't touch the amount of hours of working at all, it just adjusts the, it caps into one pile, the vacation, sick and personal times. I was supposed to have fifteen days, uh, I think the initial calculation was, um, fifteen days vacation, um. Ten days sick time and three, um, three days personal time, which added up to twenty-eight days. So when we had initially done contract negotiations back in January, we had agreed on twenty-eight days as flex time. We had gone back and forth with the contract via email and I brought in the email to Liz and the board last week that essentially said, hey, this is one of our correspondences that said, hey, you know, the contract's still incorrect and this hasn't been written out correctly. But after going back several times, we had to just go with it because at that point, I had to give notice at my prior job and we said we'd go with it, we'd amend it later. We had to sign something at that point. Mrs. Watson?
So would flex time be available to any other contract employees as well?
Um, I do think that we had brought that up with others and people chose not to have it called. You ever with the fire department, was it the fire department? He was the first one, I think.
But it would be available if the person wanted to do it as flex time? Or are you saying?
No, it had to be negotiated. Had to be part of the negotiation.
So this flex time is maybe started now?
No, starting with the fire chief.
No, I mean, what was the Portland town administrator going forward?
It goes back, it goes back to the original contract, it's part of the original contract, goes, goes back to the first day we signed it.
Flex time?
Correct. That was the intent when we negotiated her salary and her benefits.
She had, um.
Can I just have a timeout for one minute, have the town clerk in the back of the room? Mrs. Domina.
Thank you. The results are in. There were one thousand eight hundred and seventy-one ballots cast. The yes votes were six hundred and seventy-seven, the no votes were one thousand one hundred and ninety-four, the question to count.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth.
So our meeting is gonna get tougher as we go along.
So.
So the original contract was for, um, say, con vacation.
Yes.
Personal.
Yes, but that was not the intent.
So, um.
So the same number, that same total of days is reflected in the amendment contract, same total of days, same number of hours, same everything, reflected in the new contract as flex time instead of broken out. That's the only difference. Same time, same everything, just.
That's what we negotiated as flex time.
That's what we negotiated, right.
And it got, it got incorporated to a signed contract as the proper amount of days, but it wasn't classified like we agreed to as flex time.
So we're correcting something that was in there.
Right. So, uh, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I am gonna break for, um, five minutes to fulfill a promise I made to this school. And so we will return at, uh, eight-ten.